We're all meeting to order. Thank you. It's great. We're calling to order. And Debbie, do you want to know the consent? We'll begin with the flag split.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Busy agenda tonight. We're going to begin with the consent agenda to approve the minutes from last two meetings and to designate 390 as the maximum number of interdisciplinary transfer students for the next school year. That is a continuation of current.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Move. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we're going to talk about Classified Employee Week again. You're going to give us an interview.
Yeah. Good evening. In front of you there is a resolution to name, have March 2nd through 6th, 2020 be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. There's an expression out there that says many hands make light work. Well, over half of our employees are classified employees. And I heard it once said that classified employees are like the glue of the school district. And the analogy that this person gave to me was that when glue dries, you don't even know it's there. It becomes invisible, but yet it is what holds the structure together. And I thought that that analogy that was given to me by that person about our classified employees was 100% true. Our, a lot of our day-to-day operations to support students, to support teachers, be a smiling face, mow the yards, do all of that necessary work is done by our classified employees. And so I'm just honored to be able to have this resolution. And before you read that, I know that we have at least, I think at last count, at least five classified employees here. So I know you are typically a shy bunch, so if you could raise your hands and we could all honor you, raise them high.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. I, you know, I think back to my great school years in this district. And one of the things that I can say without hesitation is that I knew the custodian of Buick Creek as well as any teacher. I knew the cooks as well as, I mean, they were just as big a part of my life, childhood upbringing and teaching me right from wrong as anybody else was. And I appreciate them very much.
Yeah, for sure, Josh. Yeah, yeah, I'd like to share some. I know, oh, I did, before the Christmas break, I toured a bunch of schools with Dan. I think I got them all. And I heard a couple times as the principals were showing us around, showing us the classrooms as we left, he goes, which one was the teacher in there? You couldn't tell sometimes. The, you know, the, the, the age are that good and that talented. And as someone who's a, my, my kids have played a lot of basketball, my daughters have. And I've been in a lot of facilities up and down the Willamette Valley over the years. And, and the cleanliness and just, and organization and just everything that, our facilities are top-notch in the whole Willamette Valley. And it's because, and it's because of classified folks. So definitely notice, definitely notice.
May I comment?
All right. I'm going to read the resolution. Silver Falls School District Resolution Number 210-2020, Classified Employee Appreciation Week. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees work directly with students, teachers, administrators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students. And whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors proclaims March 2nd through 6th, 2020 to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals.
Very good. I have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll move to approve, approve the resolution proclaiming March 2nd through 6th as Classified Employee Week. Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you. So next up, we have the student reps. Owen and Evelyn or Evelyn?
I'm Owen Coté, the school board rep.
And I am Evelyn Morales-Serra, the ASB vice president.
I'll start off just by talking about some of the sports in upcoming weeks. The winter sports are kind of, a lot of sports are coming to a close, so it's kind of getting very close to state season and district season. Boys' basketball, we have two home games this week against South Albany and Lebanon. We're doing very well, currently ranked second in state and undefeated in league. The boys' senior night will be on March 3rd. And then girls' basketball, they have two away games this week against South Albany and Lebanon. They're also doing very well, currently ranked first in state with another undefeated record in league. And the girls' senior night will be on February 21st. Our unified basketball team, they have a home game tomorrow night starting at 6:00 before the boys' game. And there will be another home game on the 21st before the girls' senior night. They're playing really hard and they're having lots of fun. It's great to watch them. The wrestlers have been doing very well also. They just recently had a tri duel against Corvallis in Crescent Valley, two great matchups. Crescent Valley is actually ranked ninth in the nation. And we still had our top wrestlers, Kayden Kinsey, Nathan Kinsey, Robert Gunther, Owen McGill, and Cody Cmentez. They all won a few matches. And I think Kayden Kinsey lost by like a 3-2 decision to their best wrestler, which is, I mean, that's some really good competition. Our girls' wrestlers also just had their district qualifiers this past weekend, and they fought really hard. And then the boys' district meet is on the 21st and 22nd. And then the swimmers, swim season is coming to a close really quick. Districts are this weekend, actually. They have really strong relay teams for both the boys and girls, and they're looking to take it all the way. And they have a few individuals seeking to break some school records, and they've also already broken, I think, like three-plus school records in just the regular season, which is crazy. And then our dancers, they just had their first kind of like state season competition this, this past weekend in Staten, and they finished third, which is really great.
Now moving on to clubs and activities, ASB will be holding the Best Fox Ever auditions this week, and fundraising will begin very soon. We have a few groups preparing presentations for our district mini-conference where they will present to other leadership classes. One of our groups recently created a little newscast called FoxCast. They hope to replace the daily bulletin and keep students more informed on what is happening for our school. Lastly, our We Dine Together program is about to start. We dine together is short for, short, in short, is ASB going out every lunch period and finding someone who may be sitting alone or in a different area and strike up a conversation with them and build a relationship. Our goal is to create a better, more friendly SHS community. For FFA, the Donkey Basketball fundraiser is coming up on Monday, the 24th, at the Silverton Middle School Gym. Games start at 7:00 with the FFA team facing off the FBLA team, and the winner going on to play the teacher team. You can buy tickets from any FFA or FBLA student at the door. For FBLA, they, they had their first regional skills conference last week. They took 25 people and they all qualified for state. We had nine people get first place, six people in second, two in third, two in fifth, a seventh, eighth, and a 10th place. For theater, the musical Into the Wood opens this Friday at 7:00 and plays all weekend and next weekend. It has a lot of great talent in music. Las Aguilas this week will be having a representative from College Assistant Migrant Program from Chameca de Community College to provide information to the students from Las Aguilas Club. They will be having workshops during this month and the beginning of March. Spanish Club has invited Las Aguilas to team up with them for a service project. A speaker from the Board of Directors of a children's home in Chiapas, Mexico presented to them about the home, what it provides to the children in the area and the challenges they face in their organization. The two clubs will be meeting again this week to discuss our service project. Battle of the Books, they're, they're currently practicing for their first competition on February 29th. And that is it.
Thank you. Can I ask, take that one.
Thank you.
Okay. We are up to the first public comment. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second public comment will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Anybody wishing to address?
Good evening. Wally Lerman. I talked to some of you regarding my concerns of your decision to move forward with the superintendent search following the board's work session last week, but I thought it'd be better to make a statement tonight for the record. I wanted to caution you against moving forward with the superintendent's search in hopes that you might reconsider. I believe that the district is currently not in a good position to attract an excellent candidate to this position. It is much more likely that you will attract somebody that has been passed over by others and/or may be simply looking for a stepping stone to another position. There should be many red flags for both you and any potential superintendent candidate. The entire administrative team, composed of building principals and directors, came forward in the December meeting requesting that you put the search on hold due to issues that the district is currently experiencing. SFDA recently voted to endorse a strike before the contract was approved, which is an indication that there's a significant unhealthy relationship between the district staff and district leaders. There's been issues with members of the board not following policies and working outside normal communication channels, and the recent report stated, quote, "Communications outside of the board meeting contacts demonstrate a hidden agenda." The attorney that completed the complaint investigation also included a statement, quote, "The board will quickly run into recruiting and retention issues of district administrators if it does not adhere to those principles outlined in the various documents regarding discretion about personnel matters and respectful communication," unquote. I urge you to put the superintendent's search on hold until the district can improve the current culture, market itself as a positive destination, and to be in a position where the district could be viewed favorably over neighboring districts. Even if your intention is, is to not select somebody that is not a good fit, there will be intentional and unintentional pressure put on you, both internally at a personal level and externally by the public, to simply finish the selection task and fill a position with whomever may be willing and available. Thank you.
Lori Chadwick, and I signed in in the back, and I want to say I'm really glad that you're moving forward on the superintendent's search. And I know it's been a rough couple months, but it seems like we've come to a conclusion and we're ready to move forward, and I'm happy about that. We do, we live in a small town. We all know that means information flies fast. Sometimes it's correct, often it's half correct, and mostly it's missing essential facts. The supporters of Silver Falls Schools with more than 500 members submitted a list of questions to the Silver Falls Education Association and the Silver Falls School District. The Education Association answered the questions, the school district did not. I believe it's essential for the district to understand, to establish trust requires being forthcoming. Too often it's easy for companies and government agencies to spin facts. We all know that in the end, the truth wins, so I encourage the SFSD to take the time to answer the questions posed to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I signed in. Elizabeth Wilder, I live at 408 Little Oaks Lane, Silverton. Good evening, board members. As you know, two teachers filed a grievance against the district in 2017. The school board members at the time voted to support Silver Falls School District, not those teachers. The grievance went forward and resulted in arbitration. The arbitrator came back and found Silver Falls School District guilty of multiple contract and policy violations. At the work session last month, penance and contrition were spoken of. We need to point out that not one board member said, "I was wrong," when the arbitration went against the district. Where was the contrition when the administrators named in the report were caught red-handed violating policies? Nothing has been done to hold those administrators accountable. As we know from educating our children, accountability is not always comfortable, but usually results in positive change. Denial, on the other hand, usually results in recidivism, a repeat of said negative behavior. By sweeping the arbitration report under the rug, we miss the opportunity to learn, grow, and make things right. The recent contract, teacher contract bargaining revolved around changes to contract language to add protection for teachers. Those changes were requested as a direct result of the Miller arbitration. This is a great step forward. We see evidence that more support, direction, training, and guidance is needed, as well as changes to policies. I implore this board to put the Miller arbitration report on the agenda as soon as possible. Let's discuss the actions that led us here. Some of those actions resulted in deep conversations that others found to be complaint-worthy, which wasted time, lots of money, and energy in an effort to distract you from your obligation and your opportunity, which is accountability and transparency and moving forward together. When we've addressed what happened leading to the Miller arbitration, what we need to change and institute accountability measures, we can move forward. We have some wonderful and diverse people in this community who are willing to put words into action to model accountability and compassion. In my opinion, that broken trust that culminated in the need for the Miller report can be rebuilt. If we all practice transparency, we can move forward together.
Anybody else tonight?
Hello. I have signed in. My name is Terrence McLaughlin. I live in the city of Silverton at 823 Sun Valley Court. My wife Lori is an elected school board member. First, I wish to share something that I believe everybody in this room will agree upon. We all want the board to act in a fiscally responsible manner. District money should be spent on district students. The 111 signers of the complaint, the 543 signers of the Fair Contract Now, as well as the more than 10,000 residents and the voters, want you to act responsibly with SDFs monies. I do not think that this board or superintendents have been spending money wisely. Specifically, I understand the $6,165 the district had to pay in the arbitration that found the four district ministers had broken the contract with the union. Attorney Patterson, I understand that. Attorney Patterson was then paid the close to, don't know exactly, $10,000 for her report. Now Attorney Jacobson will be paid an amount that might be, depending on how many hours she put in, three times that amount based on the amount of work she had to do. Now we take into account the amount of Attorney Fraley's fees paid by the district, which could have used her skills elsewhere. We are looking at possibly, well, I know, tens of thousands of dollars. There was no limit set on how much money would be spent, and for that, I fault the district. I'm sorry that Attorney Fraley is not here tonight. Do not like to single out a non-present member, but based on Attorney Jacobson's statement on page 27, quote, "The board cannot take action to remove one of its members and cannot force a resignation," end quote. Attorney Fraley should have mentioned that to the board before you spent further monies. Superintendent hours, assistant superintendent hours, Attorney Fraley's time, as well as the cost of two outside attorneys, all paid for with district money. I believe this shows fiscal irresponsibility on the part of the district. Second, district policies can be and need to be rewritten. Multiple attorneys have mentioned the aspirational nature of the policies. If the attorneys cannot agree on the wording, then they need to be rewritten. What an awesome real-life education this could be for our students in the district who aspire to be attorneys or on the debate team. Look at this unclear district policy. Fix it. What a great class would that be for our students? To be led by the attorney for the district to provide a meaningful and valuable service for the district. This is where Attorney Fraley's hours would be valuable for our students as well as the district. Those students would have a true legacy, third and short. Training. This word has been recommended by every attorney involved. It's unfortunate that the original complaint stated that the new board had training. One or two short sessions does not qualify as quality training for a policy book of hundreds of pages. In case you think I am wrong, here's the key to this two-engine Cessna airplane. Read the manual. I'll train you for two hours. Then have a nice flight. Okay? Oh, by the way, the policy manual I am giving you is flawed because of the nature of its aspirational language. More training was the right thing then and now, and would not have cost tens of thousands of dollars. Thank you very much.
Hi. Aaron Cook, 515 West Main Street, Silverton. I wanted to address some of the ideas that had just come up with regards to training and also the policy. First of all, the policy, that being, the district was as unified, I believe, in 1997, if I'm correct. Since 1997, we've had a policy manual on our board in our district. And we've had multiple boards elected to your positions during that time. And that is, that policies have been rewritten at the guidance of OSBA, based on evolving trends within policy, within law. And for that amount of time since 1997, with the exception of one other time prior to this, I don't remember ever, really there being any issues with following the policies by board members. So I want to address that comment stating that while I do believe policies should continue to evolve and be rewritten per needs and per legal mandates and with the guidance, I believe, of a body like OSBA, it is interesting to me that since 1997, we haven't had an issue like this come up in our district. And also speaking as, being a former board member, I didn't feel like that those policies were very difficult to follow. I also want to talk about training. I received, I had some information regarding some training sessions that, that many of our, you have attended, and I'm going to go back to 2017 as some of the information that I, that I received. And over the last three years, those that were named in the complaint received nine trainings over the last three years, all discussing relevant content that were either at the OSBA state convention, or at board's meeting trainings that the OSBA conducted with each one of you. So I just want that to get out there on public record and the fact that I do believe that, as in boards past, this board has been well-trained. And following policy is not difficult to do. And I think our policies as well, they will be, need to be revised over time, but again, they're not that difficult to follow when using common z's. Thank you.
I want to start by saying that there's never enough training, that you guys are volunteers, and I greatly appreciate that. But I also know that it's extremely complicated, that there are a lot of rules, there are a lot of guidelines, there's a lot of relationships that have to be developed. As far as I am aware, there were no strict policies that were broken. There were guidelines in the board relationships that are under dispute. I've been watching from the sidelines as you have addressed a complaint driven by a public records request by the former deputy district administrator, Dandy Stevens, which targeted your fellow board member, Shelley Nealan, for conduct which alleges she has demonstrated, quote, "A persistent disregard for Silver Falls School District's established standards for requiring our elected officials to be fair, transparent, and ethical." After the board and investigators have examined hundreds of emails, what one finds is that Shelley Nealan is guilty of one thing: sticking to her campaign promise of asking questions of administration, eliciting responses, and speaking to the needs and concerns of district constituents. When you don't, what you don't find in those emails is the multiple examples of hostility her questions drew from administrators unaccustomed to having board members speak out or ask challenging questions. What you also don't find in the reams of documents solicited by Stevens is Nealan breaking any laws, breaching any confidences, or making any libelous or profane comments about anyone. Yes, Ms. Nealan did share a bit of her experience with the former superintendent and advised a community member that it would be best to go to a meeting with the district head with her questions in hand. Yes, after reading a lengthy grievance, she did come to a meeting thinking that she did not have the expertise to address the issues. And yes, she did contact the Oregon School Board Association with questions about the superintendent's proposed contract change, just as OSBA always has encouraged. None of those actions are reasons to punish a board member. The allegations that Nealan somehow acted in an unfair, opaque, or unethical manner dismerges the reputation of a public servant and are flat-out wrong.
Good evening. My name's Owen Von Flu, and I didn't come with the intent to speak tonight, but after hearing the testimony that I just did, I wanted to remind all of you to please read, and I know you have, Ms. Patterson's report, because what you just heard is simply not factually true. Ms. Patterson did find either five or six distinct violations of board policy. In fact, to my recollection, she said that when she looked at the evidence, she
any laws, breaching any confidences, or making any libelous or profane comments about anyone. Yes, Ms. Nealon did share a bit of her experience with the former superintendent and advised a community member that it would be best to go to a meeting with the district head with her questions in hand. Yes, after reading a lengthy grievance, she did come to a meeting thinking that she did not have the expertise to address the issues. And yes, she did contact the Oregon School Board Association with questions about the superintendent's proposed contract change, just as OSBA always has encouraged. None of those actions are reasons to punish a board member. The allegations that Nealon somehow acted in an unfair, opaque, or unethical manner besmirches the reputation of a public servant and are flat-out wrong.
My name's Owen Von Flue, and I didn't come with the intent to speak tonight, but after hearing the testimony that I just did, I wanted to remind all of you to please read, and I know you have, Ms. Patterson's report, because what you just heard is simply not factually true. Ms. Patterson did find either five or six distinct violations of board policy. In fact, to my recollection, she said that when she looked at the evidence, she found that the answer was frequently yes, there were violations of board policy. Those violations are important, not in and of themselves, but only in light of remembering what those policies are there for. Those policies and those working agreements are there to protect relationships, relationships between each other, fellow board members, relationships with staff, relationships with your superintendent, and trust amongst the public. That's what those relationships, or that's what those policies are there for. Aspirational or not, I think we should all aspire to walk well within the spirit and intent and the letter of those policies. I got involved in this not very long ago because I heard that there had been a breakdown of the relationships in this district. And I think you've heard lots of testimony of that from your administrators and from the public. And so I would just not lose sight of the fact that the policies are there to protect us, and it's vitally important that your guys' relationships are solid, that, you know, with all the parties involved in order to function as a district. And so what you do and what you decide to do with the violations, how you treat those, as Mr. Buckholz said, if we treat it lightly, then we're going to encourage future violations, and we're going to encourage people to walk outside of those boundaries. So I encourage you to take it seriously, to repair those relationships, ensure that they're solid for the future, and get our district back on track. Thank you.
I, like Owen, didn't plan to speak tonight, so I'm nervous. I'm Corinne Metzger. I live on 1940 105th Avenue. Five children, my two youngest are at the high school, the three that have graduated. I was born and raised in Silverton. It's been a great town to raise our family in. I want to thank everyone for what they've done for that. The last couple of years have totally changed my and my husband's involvement at the school district level. I think prior to that, there was a, well, multiple reasons, but there's just been things that have come to our attention that we need to be involved and we need to know what's going on at this level. And being at some of these meetings, it just constantly comes back to me that we have raised our children, they've all done amazing academically, but more important than that to be respectful citizens, to respect others, and to be trustworthy, and to have values of integrity, of their yes being yes, their no being no, and being the type of people that anybody would want to have in their community. And I'm just encouraging each of you to remember that as your role in the community, and as you, even tonight, you were talking about classified staff, and I heard you say, use the word that you could trust them, or they taught you right from wrong. And that's what adults are supposed to do in this community. And so I just encourage each of you to remember that, and like we have taught our children, if you make a mistake, own it and take care of it, and don't try to blame someone else for the mistake that you made. And with all that being said, with everything that's been going on with the district, I also am concerned about the superintendent search and wanting to find the right person for this district in a time when the climate is better than it is now. And also, I know we always talk about bond measures and those type of things, and you need to know that your community trust has been broken, and there is concern about trusting the complete board, and that will affect those kind of things in the future. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing all of us to make comment tonight. I know you're expecting a long meeting tonight. I wanted to just follow up on a couple of things that have been said and then talk about the superintendent search. First of all, we know for a fact that our policies are not up to date. In fact, the original complaint that came forward, according to our policy, should never have come forward because you may not directly interact with the board. You do not give a complaint directly to the board according to our policy. I'm happy to find that and to send it to you guys. Since the law has changed apparently, that supersedes that policy. However, we are not keeping up on policies. That's a lot of work ahead of you guys. I wish you well. But keep that in mind when we talk about policies and we talk about training. The second thing that I want to address is I completely agree, there is broken trust. In my opinion, the most critical broken trust is between teachers and administrators. Our teachers have been working in a hostile environment for years. It is amazing that they stay year after year. Many of them don't. We are losing good talent. It is critical to have this transparency, to move forward, to listen to our teachers. They know what they need. Regarding the superintendent search, I honestly, I'm really encouraged and proud of what's happening here. These kind of discussions would never have happened a year ago, two years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. This room, I've never seen it this full. I don't know about you guys. We're asking the hard questions, and we're working together to make things better for our students. But to continue to move forward together, we need a strong, permanent superintendent immediately. We need a candidate who has the ability to bring people together, to think outside the box, and who understands what it takes to educate students to compete for jobs that haven't even been invented yet. We want that superintendent to empower teachers, students, staff, and community members, and of course, our board members, to work together to serve our community. I want to see this board move forward quickly to be competitive with surrounding districts who are also recruiting a superintendent. I checked COSA's website this morning. There are 12 open superintendent positions in surrounding areas, 12. Eight of them have been open since November and December. This is a big task, but I know that you guys can get to work on this. There is no reason to hit pause longer than you already have. So I strongly encourage you to expedite this recruitment and to conduct a national search for our next superintendent. Please solicit and listen to input from our community. By working together, we will attract a strong leader to be our next superintendent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. With that, we are going to move into our discussion items. First up is the complaint response, and Tom has been selected to be our initial leader here, so Tom, take it away.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Jonathan. Bear with me, I'm not a comfortable speaker, public speaker sometimes, so please just bear with me and feel free to correct anything if I get anything wrong. Jonathan asked me at the beginning to make sure we go through and we kind of start from the beginning, and I'm glad he did this, and talk about the essence of the complaint. And to remind that it was, I'm going through Ms. Jacobson's conclusions of her report. I'm just kind of looking at the back because it summed it up pretty good. It said that the general concern of the complaint is that the board member's communications outside of the board meeting context demonstrates a hidden agenda to take certain actions. This was their general concern. So she didn't say that was a fact, she said it was a concern. But particularly as it related to the June 2019 superintendent's contract renewal. And the complaints also expressed concern that the board members discuss the employment related matters of their one employee with their constituents. And that was the, that was the, that was kind of the source of the complaint. I don't know, Jonathan, do you think that was, captured it okay, or anything you need to add on that?
No, I think that's the official position. I think my conversations with people who were either signers or asked to sign it, there were some other, I think, narratives going on other than that, but that was the official position.
Yeah, yeah, and I wasn't, this is a part I wasn't, didn't put any thought into before I came in tonight, so it's kind of ham-fisted down, but let's just go along with them. There was, it was against five board members, and I guess I'm just going to start with the easiest first. We're going to go down the complaints one by one, against which board members, I think. And I guess we'll deliberate on what to do, but I thought that at least the first two that were the most easiest to deal with were the ones against Lori and Janet. They were investigated initially by Ms. Patterson, and she in that one kind of dismissed them. She recommended that there was no violations because they weren't seated board members yet. And that's where, and so she made that kind of, to me, because they're not board members, they didn't violate any policy. And so I, I don't really know what action we could take against that. So I don't know, Jonathan, do you have any sort of discussion on what to do with those?
Well, I think we should make sure everybody's got a chance to weigh in on that point. But your point's well-taken. I think it would be difficult to, you know, apply policies and procedures to people who aren't serving this board.
Yeah, exactly. That's kind of very well said. So I don't know if anybody, that's, that's my position. If anybody wants to go forthwith from there, they can.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like anybody else has anything to add.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, so I guess we're going to take, we'll take no action on those. Is that the official way, essentially the way to say it, I suppose?
Well, do we have to vote on each of these? Or?
I think we can make that determination. We could officially vote to take no action on that if we want to. We could also, I think, choose to summarize things at the end with something. I think that's sort of in our discretion.
Okay. Okay. The next one that's kind of separated was the request to censure Jonathan. And that one, that one went to a further level. That was part of Ms. Jacobson's investigation, and she found that there was no violation of board policy. So I guess, you know, my take is there's no action to be taken. That was, that was the recommendation, or at least, there was no policy violated. So that was, to me, that leads to no action, but I don't know what other folks think of things like that. And that's, that's what I have.
I'll refrain on this one.
Yeah.
My feeling is if there was no violation, then there should be no action.
Yeah, that's kind of what, I mean, that's what we hired her to do.
Right, take her to regulations.
Yeah, that's correct. So, okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going down, making sure we're going down one by one. The next one was a censure of, the request was to censure Jennifer. Now, she did find a violation in there, but as I, it was one violation. It seemed to be a fairly minor one, but it was there. Or I don't know, it was a violation. A violation is a violation. And, but, in the discussion with the initial discussion during the work session, when Ms. Patterson presented her report, you know, Jennifer seemed very contrite, very apologetic, very, "I did wrong, I didn't know, I don't ever want to do that again," very, very, seemed to be willing to learn, and quite frankly, what I thought was, I thought was very believable. And I take her at word, and seeing Cessna, there seems to be no, I had, I just saw nothing that, that wouldn't. At least, I just, I just, my opinion is that, you know, no action is needed there, even though that there was a violation. The pain of having that, going through that process was enough to correct, I think. I don't know. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that? So I personally feel that no action is necessary there, but perhaps other, you know, there was a violation, but perhaps other people feel differently.
I just want to say something. To me, it's regrettable that my communications were not above reproach because that helped get us into this mess. So I am sincerely, I have long since changed my approach to communications, so I just wanted to add that.
I'd like to say thank you, Jennifer, for stating that. Again, this whole process of the investigation has been an incredible learning experience. I mean, and some things are so nuanced that, I mean, who knows? I've only been on the board seven months, and I seem to be learning things every time I step into this room and sit down, no matter how many times I read that policy. So thank you for your apology. I think this is part of learning, being who we are, and, you know, understanding that policy is about aspirational goals. And it has been a very, very busy time for all of us, I would say, since July first. But that's my two things.
I'd have a comment about the policies and about sort of the overall intent of, you know, a reprimand or whatever. So those policies are, there are a lot of them. They are nuanced. They are sometimes complex, specifically in one of our community members mentioned, relationships. There are a lot of different relationships to navigate and communication with different individuals. Quite honestly, I still don't have it straight. I feel like I need more training just so I don't fall into a ditch in a burger. My concern is that if we are going to investigate and reprimand members every time they make a mistake, it is going to paralyze this body, it's going to shut down discourse, and it's going to make it effectively impossible for us to do anything. So I just want us to keep in mind, while we take certainly these things seriously, we also don't want to be frivolous with how we hand out, you know, penalty cards. We are, we are all volunteers. I believe we work together very well as a board, and I believe in the integrity of my colleagues, and that they're all trying to do the very best they can. And so we do make mistakes, and we made a policy violation even in, as that one community member mentioned, accepting this complaint in a way that we weren't supposed to accept it. It was supposed to go through a different, a different process. So we make those mistakes, we learn from them, we correct them, and we do better next time. So I don't feel that there's any action needed, that's just my personal opinion, against Ms. Director Treger.
I'm going to agree. I, you know, I stood here, well, I guess it was in the other building, but, you know, I said to all of you guys that if I was found in violation, I would move and vote to censure myself, and I meant it. Having said that, I read the report on Mr. Treger, and it was what I'll call apparently extreme technicality as far as stated, one that clearly would not have resulted in anybody, I suspect, coming down too hard, if that was really the only thing they were focused on. I, I don't feel that anything is necessary there personally.
Anybody else? Okay, on to the difficult, on to the difficult one. Shelley, Shelley Nealon, the complainants asked for the resignation of Shelley Nealon. We can't, we can't, the school board can't do that, only the voters can do that. But I went through, I went through Ms. Jacobson's report. I counted, I came up with seven violations as in her report, and, and I feel that they do rise to the level of a censure. Because it's, in my opinion, there was discussing, violating the superintendent, discussing a superintendent's contract outside of executive session is dangerous. And I know, I know that, boy, when they were first talking about the cost of this investigation, you know, we were talking $30,000, something like that, and I just, I about lost it, but... we were talking $30,000, something like that, and I just, I about lost it. But a couple more iterations of that, and we could be on the hook to, to writing, you know, and talking, talking about anybody outside, especially a superintendent's contract out, outside like that. A couple, had those descriptions went a little bit further, we could be writing a six-figure check to somebody. And that's why these policies are there. You gotta be tight on that. You can't, you, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta hold on to that. So I, I feel very strongly about that. For discussion, I did write up a draft of a censure. We're supposed to take action tonight. Seems kinda quick, but, but I, I wrote up a draft. And, and for a model, I, I looked all over the place, all over the internet, and I settled on this afternoon around noon or 11:00 or so. I thought, I, I, I got a copy of the re- the censure resolution we did for, for Todd White. Sending everybody a copy of it now. I, I got one. Paul went one. And then, here's a copy of the draft. I just did that to just to, I, I guess I'm showing my homework, 'cause I taught me in high school, where I started from. And I just outlined it, and I guess, and one of the things in some of the arguments that I, that I heard is, is that it's, they're aspirational, and they're right. And even, 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 it's like, it occurred to me hearing the discussion and some emails, the, the request to censure is an aspirational document, 'cause you can't enforce it. There's, there's, we have no enforcement capability in that. But, but it does, it does send a message. And, and part of the reason that I, you know, I, I delineated between Jennifer, what I felt was the right thing to do for Jennifer, and Shelley was, it started with that work session where, where Ms. Nealon and Shelley was defiant and threatening. And, and when, when I just thought that Jonathan and, and Jennifer both showed, showed her the way out, just saying, just, you know, admit it, and, you know, take your lumps, and, and, you know, try not to do that again. You know, we're all learning, but, but when it's, but the defiance for me was really what, what set me off. And, and the behavior continues. I, I don't know how to really present this one, but on January 27th, Shelley Nealon, during negotiations, sent an email, you know, we, we had training on this in November, just in November, where you're not supposed to send emails to the whole board advancing your position. And during bargaining, Shelley did just that. You know, a two-page document full of, full of, full of things, that, that these are reserved for executive session. And, and you're not supposed to have a discussion. And there was some, some of the, the statements and the things in there, I know to be mistaken. I'm not gonna say false, it was a mistake. There, there was some mistaken stuff. And I almost, to correct the record between my fellow board members on some of this stuff, I almost hit reply. Almost hit reply all. That would've been a board meeting. And that would've, that would've been a violation of law. And I just held on to it, and I had to just sit, sit in fret while negotiations went on, while, while, you know, we, those, we're supposed to have those discussions, discussions amongst each other in executive session. And I could've, she could've said that, and I could've said, "Hey, I know information about this," and perhaps could've, you know, dialed some of the tension down. And I really don't know what to do about that document going forward. But, so, with the, with the fact that it's, and we all got that email. And, so yeah, the, the violations of policy, only a couple months after training about that specific act, continued. So I, so I, I filled this document out, I prepared a draft resolution, and as a starting place for us to discuss. And, yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
I'm gonna respond to that. That's actually false. I talked to Jonathan beforehand about what I was, I talked to him multiple times about submitting or having an executive session to talk about bargaining before our team went back into the room, because it was the last bargaining session with the mediation, Wednesday. And I thought it crucial that we should go into executive session and discuss this, because that was the bottom of the barrel. They were gonna go strike. There was no plan to go Monday to have a meeting like they did and solved it. There was none. This was an emergent situation. And I talked to Jonathan about it multiple times. And I said, "We have to go into executive session and talk about this. We have to get our team together so we know what to do. We, we need to listen to them, and we need to guide them." And then Jonathan and I decided that it would be okay if I made a state, if I wrote a statement and sent it to him and, I believe, Paul. Is that correct? You and Paul?
I did suggest that you could send something to the representative.
And you, you are, you are correct, yes. And I did send it to the whole board, which was a mistake. And I shouldn't have done that, I think it was just, it was a mistake that I made. And it was only supposed to go to you and the representative. And we talked about that. And I was like, "Oh, shoot, okay. Yeah, you're right. I shouldn't have done that. You're right." And we talked about that. We did. And I, I said that will, that's, I think that was just out of habit, because it's been done so many times before, hundreds of times before, with not only this board, but previous boards. They've been sent to the whole board. So, with that being said, I'm going to, I will fight back on that accusation that you gave to me, Tom. And I'm going to give you context of what happened. That's what really happened. So...
I just got an email.
Well, maybe, you know what? If you could, if, if we communicate a little more, then it might be understood that that was the case. Instead of doing this in front of everybody, that might be more healthy and more proactive. And I used to communicate a lot. I used to communicate. I would ask questions. I would talk to my fellow board members. I would ask Tom, "I have a question." He'd say, "Okay," for years, for two years, when he was the board chair. I figured, I tried to figure out a way how to better communicate. I tried to figure out a way to not communicate. How do I go around that? What do I do about that? I mean, nothing was going to work regarding me. That's it. Nothing was gonna work. But one thing I will say is that I hope I'm forward, I, I hope that I'm given the opportunity, just like Jennifer is, to realize that this situation that Ms. Jacobson found violations on, my attorney did not. And my attorney has a lengthy letter on board book that you may read about his responses to Ms. Jacobson's findings. And I encourage everyone to read that as well. And in fact, Debbie has some copies, if you haven't, for anybody who would like one. This has been a harrowing, horrible situation for me personally, for this entire board, for this entire community, and our staff, our one staff and his staff. This has been terrible. And I think there's been a lot of lessons learned, especially with me. I have reflected on multiple things. But one thing that I'm not going to change is I'm gonna continue to ask questions. I am gonna continue that. And I think it was a problem when I had a voice before, and I think that's why I was a target. Because I was asking questions to do the best for this community. That's why I was elected to this position. That's why so many people elected me. I'm not gonna stop. But I will change it, I will flip it around. I have high respect for my fellow colleagues. You were elected to this position, there's a reason you're here. We have to work together. I'm ready to move forward doing that. And I hope I'm afforded the courtesy from you, Tom, as you did to Jennifer, that this experience has been terrible for not only me, but for everybody. And there is a lot of education that needs to be done. A lot. And there is a lot of policies that need to be looked at and amended and discussed. And I think we have already started that with our superintendent agreement. We did all of that together as a collaborative group. We all put in our opinions, we all put in our ideas of what we wanna see in a relationship between this board and our superintendent, and to move forward. And it was a great, it was a great session. It was a new, fresh session. And I feel really good about it. That's the best I've felt. And if we can move forward doing the same thing that we started back in August, that's gonna change this board completely. It's gonna enhance our relationships, it's going to enhance transparency, it's going to enhance people who want to come to more board meetings on a positive note, it's not gonna wanna attack people. So that's how I feel. And I just wanted to, that's it, I guess.
I would also call our attention to the fact that all three attorneys recommended additional training. No one recommended censure. We have not yet, to my knowledge, at least to my satisfaction, received appropriate guidance about what kind of liability the district or the board might face, if any, if certain actions are taken or other actions are not taken. We haven't received guidance about what the consequences are of a censure or a not, not a censure. In light, and our attorney unfortunately is not available, and we're out of time. In light of that, I, I feel like the only reasonable course of action is to take the recommendation of all three lawyers, which was to pursue additional training. And I would welcome it, because there have been so many times where, I mean, I had my hands slapped last fall by Renee Sessler for sending an email that sounded like I was trying to start a liberation. Okay, mea culpa. I didn't think I was, but apparently some two-word sentence in there was enough to be a concern. Okay. I will be more attentive, I will try, try harder. But it is difficult when your intention is to do the work, to be engaged, to be involved, to not just sit here and warm a chair twice in a month. The more active board members, the more engaged they wanna be, the more likely they are to trip. If you just sit here, you never make a mistake. Easy. So, it, what I said before, if we are going to shame and embarrass one another every time we make an error, we will cease to function. And, and we should just all go home. Because this is a tremendous time commitment, a tremendous commitment of energy. And our kids are worth us putting every bit of our attention into what they need. This has been a huge expenditure, a huge energy suck. And I'm just really looking forward to being able to get back to serving our students. 'Cause I think, I'm pretty sure I can, I can speak for all of us, that that's why we're here. Nobody came to serve on this board to engage in, you know, rituals of public humiliation. So.
I think there's a couple of things that are worth mentioning on that. One, the report from Ms. Jacobson didn't, didn't recommend censure. And I, I asked her a question, it wasn't a response. She said, it's not her job to recommend that, it's her job to tell us how serious the violations were, and to give us a sense of sort of what we ought to be paying attention to. And she talked to the fact that it can interfere with our ability to keep staff, and, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of factors that go into play. So, I'm not sure that the point that there wasn't a recommendation of censure carries weight with it, because I don't think, I don't think she was planning to share what she thought in terms of that particular remedy she was trying to convey, the findings and the seriousness of them.
But her, her recommendation reflected in our minutes was explicitly to seek additional training. That was her recommendation. In her, in the answers to those questions, she did sort of tiptoe around this issue of, "Well, I don't know if this..." And this is what I'm saying. I, I don't have, I don't have answers to those questions. There was just enough information to be dangerous and frightening, but not enough to actually inform our course of action. And so I feel like, given, excuse me, given that, you know, I'm gonna go with what I do know, and not with I maybe sort of suspect and kind of understand. That's just my, my comfort level in terms of making, making a decision, so.
I mean, I'll just add, in, in response to, to some of the questions board members sent, Ms. Jacobson says, states, "It may not have been a violation of board policy to engage in some of these communications, but any such extra boardroom conversation about a personnel, personnel matter increases the district's liability for a potential employment action from district employees." And that's, boy, I tell you, if there's anything that I've learned on this, being on the school board for, wow, around 10 years now, is you can't talk about personnel. You can't at all, just zero. And I, we have 4,000 students, 450 employees, how many parents, you know, there's so much, 90% of what we do here is personnel. So you're, the default answer to all your, to your questions generally is like, "Well, I can't talk about that." And it gets really frustrating. I, I remember when I was first a new, a new board member, I'd ask questions of Tim Roth, and he'd always give me this answer like, "Well, yeah, it's really hard, and it's tough," and, and he would just sound like a doggone politician. But now I get it, 'cause you just can't, you can't say nothing. You just can't. And I know it's hard. And, you know, it's funny, 'cause as I, the more I do this, the more, the more I act like that guy, just don't say nothing. Just, it's really, you know, you listen, but you just can't, you just can't. 'Cause you get comfortable talking with a few people, and then a few more, and, unfortunately, they go and repeat things, and then, anyway, it's, you, we just can't. You know, and so I, I just, I'm for, I, I'm for a strong statement of some sort. And I just put this together this afternoon for us to consider.
Tom, did you read my attorney's letter?
Yeah, and it was, and I, and I really, 'cause it's, this is, his, his statements about it being aspirational were true. This is an aspirational statement also. We can't, it's unenforceable. There's nothing we can do. But, but it is, it's, the, the aspiration is, don't ever talk about personnel, ever, because it's gonna cost this district a ton of money.
But you can talk about contracts in public settings, like we did as a board. And that's what happened.
Well, I, you know, I'd have to go into the details of the lawyer. I, I don't, I, we hired, we hired this, this, you know, the lawyer we hired. And, you know, and her experience is keeping districts out of trouble, so I, I tend to, I tend to, I tend to side with that.
Well, it's a tough spot to be.
Yes, yes.
You know, we have a lot of information coming.
We do.
With all due respect, I mean, your attorney's gonna present a case that clearly represents you.
Well, so is Ms. Jacobson is gonna represent a case against me.
I, I don't think so. I think she was.
Oh, no.
I was trying to say, what I, what I wanna say is, and I just wanna reiterate this, that this experience has been very eye-opening. And it has been horrible for not only me, but for my family, and my children. And my children.
Yeah, I can, I was just, the point I was trying to make is, we're getting a lot of information.
Right, we are.
When I look at, at the report put together by Ms. Jacobson, who was hired as an independent person to look independently at the facts and the findings, and then I see another report that basically across the board says everything she said was bogus, I, I have to decide in my mind, who am I gonna give credence to? And I have to say, the independent investigator holds more water for me than somebody specifically hired to represent your personnel. That's, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. I mean, most defense attorneys are not going to put out there like clients will, right? And they're not going to.
Right.
So I, I appreciate it, but, but I'm not sure how much weight I can give as a board member.
It's a different perspective that I think needs to be taught, that needs to be taught about objectively.
Fair.
So, yeah.
I do want to say that I'm still really unclear about the attorney bit about, about board members requesting to talk to their, to the attorney, like, like, are we not allowed to talk to Lisa?
We, we are allowed to talk with attorneys. What we're not allowed to do is to disclose what was talked about with regard to board business with the public. That's where we would trip.
But we can't with each other in the open session?
Yes, absolutely. I got clarity from Lisa on that exact question when we, she and I spoke recently on number one at some time last summer.
So we can share that information with board members, but not in the public?
Not with the public.
Exactly, which I had no idea of. We've never been trained on that before. And then I learned it now.
As evidenced by the fact that we are asking you questions about.
I said, the fact that you're asking me questions, right, exactly. Right, 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 yeah. So there's a lot of specific details in my mind that we haven't been taught in the years that I've been here about that kind of so-called relationship. You know, quote-unquote, relationship. And so, I mean, for me, I want to learn every detail about it. I want to learn about it moving forward. I want to know what the details are. Not only with that, but with multiple other things. So my goal, as a, as with my remaining term, is I'm going to dive deep into learning about specific language, about, you know, communication and what the, what the policies say, make sure they're updated, and make sure that I ask the questions of the right people in the right contexts. And I think that's the most important lesson that I've learned of this whole thing is asking more questions and learning. That's, that's it. Is, is, I mean, I'm a lifelong educator. I will always ask questions to learn more, to get it right.
You know, I, Tom, I wanted to address something that you stated about, I believe Ms. Jacobson was using the terms increases or provides the potential. But that is increasing or potential. It didn't state that it would in fact happen. When based under aspirational goals, you stated it's not enforceable. I guess what I'm saying is, there's a lot of give and take when we're talking about policies and procedures, when we're talking about aspirational goals. And for us not to try to acquire and to achieve aspirational goals is one thing, yes. And, and I agree, you can trip up along the way, just because you don't know that you're not supposed to step there. But you can also create harm by not doing nothing and not achieving those aspirational goals, therefore playing it so safe that all you are contributing is nothingness. Do you see what I mean?
Oh, I do.
And, and we come with passions. I mean, frankly, I teach. I love students. I love teaching and making it magical, the whole ability to learn. And I do, that's where my heart's at, and that's why I ran. I mean, and so the aspirational goals, may I aspire to them, but boy, if I trip up along the way, I'm doing that certainly by accident, unintentional, but maybe to achieve what I believe is right for those students, for the district. Do you see what I mean? It wasn't, I'm not, sometimes things happen, you have the best intention, and it may not be interpreted in that way. And I really feel that's true with our policies. And quite frankly, if we were to go back and start pulling up all sorts of public records and going through them with a fine-tooth comb, I'm sure we would find violations left, right, and even middle. And then what are we going to do? Are we going to lash out at that? No. This is getting to be ridiculous in my mind to put so much emphasis and to slap somebody on the wrist, whether it be a censure, my goodness. We're here. We want to learn. We had great discourse and we respect each other from, from July 1st on. And then this investigation came. And all of us shut down. We were afraid to speak, and that's so wrong. To communicate and to be robbed of that as board members, that's wrong. And I'm not going to be put in that place. We all have our voice. We all know what we believe in, what we want to see for those students and for this district. And I'm not going to walk around with a gag thinking I'm going to trip up and someone's going to pull my public records and see what I violated for speaking my passion and what I believe in. Please. I have to take a breath. I mean.
Yeah. I mean, I, I appreciate that, but, I mean, and I really, I do. It, but it's, you got to be careful. I mean, I feel that we have to be careful when speaking your, our passions can be, can cause, can put this district in a difficult position. I remember once, years ago, someone I know had a tragedy and affected, and affected their family. Just be really carefully about this. And, and the kids, this person I knew had kids in the school district. And I happened to run into the, the admin of that building. And I asked how these kids were doing, how the, the family members were doing with this tragedy. And blank, a wall came down. What the heck's that about? Just asking. And I realized, it took me a long time to figure that out, that, that was that wall of, this person I knew wanted, wanted to talk about the kids and how they were doing in this tragedy. But they couldn't. Because that's violating, you know, the, oh, I, there's a term for it. Yeah, yeah, they can't, they can't. And I, I, I read in the emails how passionate y'all were, people were about, I get that. But you can't do it. You've got to put that wall on like that admin who I know, this person wanted, they wanted to tell me, but they couldn't. You just, bam. You just can't. Because of conversation, then another one, then another one. And someone's falsehood becomes truths. And it, because it's kind of a conversation off to the side, you're, you get, you get put in these, you, you end up, you'll, you'll inadvertently find yourself in an, in an echo chamber of ideas. And rumors become truth. And it, you just can't, you just, you can't do it. You can't do it. And then I've seen it, I've almost fallen into that trap a couple of times early on. And I'll be blunt. If, if, if I was a new board member, I'd be, I'd be on this investigation, guarantee you. I guarantee I would tell them that. So, I mean, but, but, but I'd like to think that I would have just taken my lumps and said, yeah, uh, you know, I, I appreciated Jonathan's statement. If he was in violation and you wanted to censure him, I'd censure himself. You know, if, if you make a mistake, you own it. And you don't, you minimize the grief from that point forward and you move on. And that's, that's the thing that, that I'm really, I'm afraid that it's just going to continue because of the, the amount of defiance. And so, I, that's my case. I don't know where else to go with this, you know? I, I've kind of stayed in case.
Thanks, Tom. I, I don't know if you want to say something.
You know, I, I probably won't say too much. I'll tell you, I've had a lot of conversations with myself in my pickup. And I'm telling you, the more conversations I have with myself, the more ambiguity there is, especially after we had three attorneys look at this allegations. One thing I've learned a long time ago is, as a board, if we vote on something and one or two is not in agreeance, you should support that vote, even if you don't agree with it. And that's kind of where I'm coming, that's kind of where I ended up with this whole thing. And Tom, I really appreciate you doing this because when it comes to personnel, and even with my work, that is the worst thing to deal with, is personnel. So I appreciate, Tom, the work you put into it, that you was asked to do, that you volunteered to do, because I wasn't here to do it. But we had three attorneys and the conclusion basically was the same thing, basically. I mean, there were some different wording. And the thing that keeps coming back to mind with me is, I feel maybe even Shelley's a little more aggressive with her, her tone. Doesn't mean she's a bad person. I think in all their, their own ways, they have definitely learned something from the whole ordeal. And I wouldn't wish that on anybody. So even though maybe personally I don't agree with what the attorney said, I feel that's the majority and we should honor that. And moving forward, if there's a problem, then that can be a different story. I just feel like we need to, we've had her say, let's move on and do the work that we're elected to do.
So, I think at this point, everybody's had a chance, and Tom, you've been leading this, so I'm going to hand it back.
I have a statement I'd like to read. Dear board and the public, my attorney has submitted a response to the investigation. I will let that response speak for me, however, I do have a short comment. Now that the reports are complete, I will reiterate my statement from December 30th, 2019, that it is time to move forward. We are here to help children in this community. We are here to make sure our schools are as safe and nurturing as possible. We need to continue the process to hire a new permanent superintendent, secure Student Success Act money, start our budget process, revisit our current policies, and amend and update and continue educational training for all board members, as multiple attorneys have advised, just to name a few. I am not going to resign. I am not going to quit my job that I was elected to do. I'm going to stay and continue to contribute ideas and questions to the community of Silver Falls School District and work extremely hard to do that. Thank you.
Well, I just, I guess I wanted to add, I hear what everybody's saying. I just wanted to say that I appreciate everybody's input. I did talk to our attorney, Lisa, about liability. I don't feel qualified to summarize what she said, but I haven't been convinced that censure is, like, there, it, it, we have overwhelming evidence in our documents here that we need additional board training. I mean, that's pretty clear, and that was a request from the complaint. I don't, I, I guess my point is I haven't been convinced about censure. There hasn't been enough information presented to me to feel like that would be a positive thing for everyone moving forward. And I think that's really important that we keep that spirit of cooperation in mind as, as we're, we're moving forward. But I do, I do hear everything that everybody's saying, and I think they're all really valid points. I just wanted to say that that's where my balance tips at this point. I'm still open to more arguments.
Well, I'm not seeing enough support for this, for the, for the, for the draft, censure resolution I prepared. Am I, am I reading the room right? I mean, what about any other, I mean, is there any other action anybody would like to support or put forth?
I, well, I don't know if I should do this. Can you do it in the form of a motion or a law? I would just suggest that we get a little bit more specific in maybe a, an action plan or a scope of work as to how we will, what we want to be trained on, how we're going to get that lined up, what policies we feel like we really need to take a good look at, and actually have a, a course of action late, or in, maybe within the next three days, with some timeframe around it that we can provide the public as a, as a point of accountability. And say, here's what we've committed to as a group in the board, and here are the, sort of the hotspots that we feel like we really need to touch on. I mean, that would be at least an affirmative action that we can take.
I think that would be a great idea because what we can do is take this and, and see if we can compose some type of intensive training and to step that board into acknowledge that we are making this effort to correct anything that we simply don't understand or we need to know to be better and stronger. Because I do want to keep the communication going with this board. As different as we are, I appreciate all, hearing all sides freely and openly without fear. And so I think that would be a fantastic way to go.
One thing I don't want to do is get into a quagmire of training where we're just mired down by all this, I mean, so at what point do we get trained on?
We'll make it targeted. That's what I'm saying. Let's be focused.
I think the best thing to keep in mind going forward, if you have questions, ask Superintendent Moore. That's what they're leading the team for and Dan. They're trained in this stuff and they can keep us out of trouble instead of shooting it to one of us, you know, just ask them. They're both open and willing to talk. I, I mean, I agree some training, but I don't want to do a whole bunch of training. We haven't got time for it.
Just ask, just ask, ask the superintendent. Just, just, you got a question, don't, just ask the superintendent. That's, that's, training's over.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think in principle, that's a good. I think that's a good, absolutely a good call, you know, if all, you know, if you're wondering, call Paul. But an example is that, so Lori and I were at a conference on Friday, and there was a PACE representative there. We went over because they have this really great chapstick that we like to grab. And we felt a little guilty, so we started chatting because you don't want to just take their merch and, you know, not have a conversation. And she said, you know what, call, we're here for you, because they provide legal services, right? And insurance. And they said, call us anytime. And both Lori and I went, well. You might want to be more, you know, we had a way, I don't know that that's, I don't know that we should call you anytime. And that's what I'm, I'm talking about more is, we have these resources that we really want to use that offer themselves to us as a board for really good reasons. Because there's a lot going on in the state. And when we go to school board conferences, they are so rich and so exciting, and they are so empowering. But then we feel like, okay, well, we've got all these resources, but now we have to be really mindful as to how we use them. And so, you know, maybe, maybe a lot of it just centers around that. How do we use resources that, legal resources, educational resources, OSBA resources? What is the appropriate way to access that information?
Well, I wanted to speak really quick to the, the gentleman who came forward, Erin Cook, who said that we have been to many conferences. who said that we have been to many conferences, I'm not sure that he's been to any, but those conferences don't talk about policies. They don't talk about policies at all. They talk about bond measures, they talk about Title IX, they talk about building facilities, they talk about everything else you can think of, except policies, everything else. So when we go to those every, twice a year, it's not about policy, we don't get trained on that there. We get trained on everything else, real estate attorneys, PACE, I mean, everything, and there's a lot. And you have to choose from a list of multiple options throughout the day, and we start at 7:00 AM, and we go till 8:00 PM. And you choose, you're like, okay, where do I, what's important now, what do I go to, what's important for the district right now, and we make that decision to go to those sessions and learn about it, come back and share it with our board members. That's the, that's the message that is sent to us, take all this back to your board members and share it with them. And so that's why we go. So the fact that we want to do policy training is very different from any of those conferences that are, so anyway, that's a side note.
Yeah, I wanted to keep this.
Yes, you're right. Thank you, Jonathan. Yes, thank you.
Mr. President, Chair, I just want to offer a comment. I think the next time our board is scheduled to meet is Tuesday from tonight. In the complaint policy, there is a timeline that we are required to follow. So the response to the complaints, due, that response could be a number of things that have been suggested and discussed tonight, or it could be a request for an extension, if a decision on what that response is going to be is forthcoming after the next working. So my point being that there needs to, there needs to be an action taken, that we can respond to the complaints. If that's not tonight, then that action tonight should be to request an extension. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
Or convoluted.
No, I think, you know, I've been listening, I think, I think Tom summarized it a minute ago, you know, I came in ready to probably support a censure, I was gonna support one for myself, I said that publicly, I would have probably done it. I'm also willing to support the idea that we move forward with training as a formal resolution to this, it sounds like the majority of the board is in support of that as well. So I would like to see us move to a resolution, formal response to this complaint, and keep us moving, because I think at this point, we've heard probably all that's going to affect our opinion.
Yeah, I don't see a support for censure, so yeah, I mean, if you want to, I'm not quite sure, yeah, it isn't going there, you know, I came in here to present that case, it fell flat, so, yeah, I don't know what the, what the next action would be, Jonathan would seem to be.
Well, I think, I think what we're gonna want to do is probably draft a resolution that will request focused additional training, especially regarding policies that were violated, and probably put a timeline on it, something that's at least, you know, not just entirely wishy-washy.
And we want to do that.
I think we have to, so I think we need to. I do, I, well, okay, I guess I'll stick to my own requirements, stop talking.
Do you make a motion to have a resolution?
Yeah, but I think what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna try to draft something, or you guys can too, and then.
I see, okay.
And I was actually gonna look at, probably can't, some of what's in Tom's draft, actually, I mean, a lot of it's all still true, perhaps with the exception that rather than ultimately resulting in a censure, I think ultimately, it sounds like we're gonna result in something different. I mean, I think essentially, if we change this, it's not, I mean, most of it's all true, so.
Just something regarding those two policies, or, well, the one policy and the board superintendent.
We could strike the part here if we wanted to.
Keep the whereas.
Essentially, everything is factual as I see it, does anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the only thing that, so as a remedy to, intended to resolve the complaint, hereby, okay, so, I think everything after hereby in the final paragraph needs to be rewritten, and I think what we're saying is, hereby commence to schedule targeted training. I don't think we have to claim from who, I know there are several options there, we could work on that, see who has availability. Targeted training regarding, shall we just start with violated policies, or is there additional that you guys really want to make sure we include?
Can we just say regarding findings?
Regarding findings.
Now, do we include in this resolution an evaluation of policies? I mean, I think the first step is to, you know, probably part of training too, but just to take a look at them, is that, is that understood, or do we need to be explicit about?
You know, I want to be careful with, I agree with what you said, Shelley, regarding policies being ambiguous at times, difficult. I also want to point out something that Irv said, and piggyback on it, we could spend every minute, the rest of our career.
Oh, totally, yeah. I understand. No, I totally get that, yeah.
So we can't.
That's definitely, yeah.
Regarding findings, to be completed, shall we put a target completion date? Anybody have a suggestion?
I'll just say it's before the beginning of the next week. Yeah, that's usually when we have training anyway, so, that's a good date.
You guys good with that?
It's usually a pretty dead month for a lot of people, so, people are usually.
Okay, so, that's, that's what I'm hearing, is, are we missing something from this? Is that getting us where we want to be? I want to get us there, but I don't want to move us so quickly that we have.
Mr. Chair, and just one more point of order, is that you're actually taking the action on this, in this moment?
After, right.
So you're still in discussion?
Right.
We could do it.
Thank you, yes, good point, getting ahead of ourselves.
We could do it now.
I think technically we could, but we could, we can.
Technically, you'll have another public comment.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, probably have to comment.
Okay, does anybody have anything else on this before we move forward? No objection, we will move to 7B, the draft 2021, excuse me, 2020-2021 calendar. What do we have in here?
Let's change up the vibe in here a little bit.
There you go.
Talk about something cool for next year, the calendar. Now that's what everybody's back here for. But, it's a neat thing, because it's a very nice collaborative effort so far, and that's the way it's gonna continue to be, we began our work by just kind of taking the basic template from, from most years, you're not gonna see anything extraordinary on this at all. But sitting down at the Licensed Forum meeting on January 29th, and kind of laying out the basics, make some decisions on some, some early release dates, first day of school, last day of school, that sort of thing, that then each building rep could take, over last week's time, back to their buildings and get feedback from, from staff. And then, so we've made some further changes several times over the last week of school to get to where we are today. And we have Classified Forum coming up Wednesday this week, and so, whereas many of them have already seen this at their, their different buildings, all but be on hand, Dan and I will take them through, you know, the same process, and so there's, there's eyes on for everybody to try to come up with a good calendar to recommend to you, that's entirely your decision at that point. So, that's our goal, is to send you something that we can all be proud of for next year. So, I can answer questions if you want, there, like I said, there's really nothing that I think leaps out real big, I was back there and caught, caught a glitch that needs to be fixed in the first grading period, dates down at the bottom and that sort of thing, so it's, just about every day, we've been finding some little thing that needs to be ironed out and just clarified, so, that'll continue, and so I imagine next, next regular meeting, we'll have something to.
That's a good question. Do we shoot for the same number of class days every year? It's probably a stupid question.
174.
Okay, that's just consistent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kevin, who else is meeting in the forum? That you talked about the Licensed Forums, where you were talking about, you're there as a.
Leslie Roach, and Dan, and then all the building reps.
Thank you for your work on that, for everybody, and I appreciate everybody contributing in that.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a good system, it worked, and we, we, you know, found some great, I think, agreement on things to be able to come out with the base calendar, and then we'll just sharpen it up from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul, for all your work, and there's your monitors, if there are questions between now and next month, please just send your questions directly to Mr. Paul or Mr. Bush, we'll get answers, and we can give that for next month, and approve it next month.
Okay, 7C, designate board representatives for classified bargaining. So this is a discussion item, there is no action, because according to policy, the board chair appoints members of such committees. However, I wanted to share with you my thoughts, and ask the people who I have in mind if they are willing, and we can sort of go from there. So I was going to recommend Janet and Tom, that would be a nice combination of viewpoints and experience, and, you know, so those were gonna be my recommendations for this bargaining theme, and with two people named, hopefully if one can't attend, the other can, that worked out for gentlemen. So, I think, if any concern from you guys, share it now, so that we can, you know.
No, I'd be fine, I'd be happy to.
Is it gonna be shorter than, is it gonna take as much time as a teacher?
Are you asking for a process? Because I'm not making any.
Yeah. I'd be, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, thank you, I've been joining Dan with, on the Classified Labor Management team, and that's just been, just been really great to meet those folks, and to get to know all the work that they do, and it's been a real privilege, so, you know, I look forward to it, thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Paul.
Appreciate it. Any questions? Okay, 7D, the superintendent, Sarah and Greg.
Thanks for your patience. Thank you all very much for having us on your very busy agenda, we appreciate it. It's nice to see you all again, this is very high. So, my understanding is you'd like to talk about a potential candidate pool, and I have brought with me my marketing guru to help address that.
Yeah, and I think one of the concerns, you know, you heard it tonight, it's been expressed at the time we paused the search, and expressed multiple times, is this question of, you know, where, what's the candidate pool look like, and as well, you know, what impacts do current proceedings within the district likely have on that pool? So, those are some questions I think we all are probably curious about your opinion.
So, could I just share a few observations with you? I suggested about a month ago that you pause this search until you cleared the decks of some of the things going on. I knew the emotional energy and time commitment to what was about to take place was huge, and when we're doing a search, we'd like to have your undivided attention, and I didn't think we would have your undivided attention for a while. So hopefully tonight, you've coalesced around some action to take care of what was going on, so that we can now move forward with the search. This will probably come as a big surprise to all of you, but those things that have gone on in this district for the last year are forever, and I'll underscore the word forever, embedded in the internet and will not go away, so whether you did the search now, next week, next month, next year, or 10 years from now, whatever has gone on is still there, and so it's not going to change. But we are still within the window of time to conduct a full-fledged search for this year, as long as we can get started late February-ish, and finish it up sometime in April, then we're okay. So we're not going to be punished from a candidate pool standpoint. I'm always amazed, there are candidates who like challenges, there are candidates who want an easy ride, and you just never know which they're going to, you know, which ones are going to sign up until you go out and ask for it. We've had good success, no matter the time of the year, especially up until about May, in getting decent candidate pools for positions, so I was not concerned when I suggested you take the time to kind of get this behind you a little bit. So I think we're still fine, I would not encourage you to, I would, I would discourage you from putting it off too much further though, so that if, by the time of your next board work session, which I think Paul said was two weeks from now.
Yeah, it's two weeks.
If we can get started right after that, then we'll be fine. We still have the challenge of spring break, which is always a challenge for scheduling things, so we can tailor the new calendar to a point where we can do all of the marketing advertising and trying to recruit candidates up until about spring break, and then as soon as spring breaks over, then we get busy with the boardwork of application reviews and interviews and all of that. So I think we're just fine, we're still fine. What has happened is not going to, the timing of it so far is not going to have a negative impact on who you would get for this job, so I'm not, I'm not very concerned about that.
Also, I'd just like to say that you guys have come a long way as a board, as a community, as a district, obviously, you've got that contract, things are moving along, you're dealing with this, you're working well together, that all speaks very well to Silverton, I don't see this as being a hindrance at all, so.
So I'm hopeful that tonight, you will decide to go forward, even though you still have some housekeeping to do, I think, to finish up the work that Sarah had done earlier, and then if you can finish that off by next board meeting, then we'll be ready to go the next day, basically. So I think you'll be fine.
I would like to hand out the revised proposed search calendar, and at least talk about a few items on here in preparation of moving forward.
We may have.
We have. Well, right here. Excellent. That's right, yes.
Yeah, we still have.
Oh, okay. That's what matters.
Don't waste your work. Thank you. Pleasure.
Thank you. It's great. All right, so, when we were revisiting this and looking at our options, I noticed that on the board calendar... on the board calendar, we still have held for February 18th a special public meeting for the superintendent search. If you wanted to, we could keep that date, have a quick meeting after having reviewed this calendar, adopt the calendar, adopt the qualities and qualifications, determine the salary range, go over any additional marketing needs, and get in a really solid position to hit the ground running with our advertising and marketing, getting the position posted, let those applications come in and give it a solid, I think it's six weeks, if we do the February 18th date, I believe the position will be open, I'm sorry, five weeks, close just after spring break, and then we meet, we train on screening the applications. We've got a little over a week, I think, to get all of those done, submit your rankings, and then we come back and we review those rankings and identify who you're going to interview, and so on and so forth. If the 18th doesn't work, that does not put us behind it, then we would meet on the 24th to accomplish those items.
Twenty-four, that's our regular scheduled work session.
So, the 18th would be a special?
Eighteenth would be a special.
That's a Tuesday.
Okay. Do you think if we went through this process at our regular scheduled work session, we'd be okay? Is that what I heard you say?
On the 24th?
On the 24th.
Yes. If you didn't want to have that added on to your agenda, if you want to take care of it ahead of time, we could do it on the 18th. Either day will work.
It is, but availability can be a challenge. So, we need to be very...
We'd have to sense for how big our agenda is on the 24th. Probably not yet.
It's a monster.
Is it, is it on the 24th? Okay.
I'm sure there's lots, so...
I'm just trying to be, to what extent we try to make the 18th work for the 24th.
Carry on, we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, you don't have to determine that this evening. You can just let me know which day you want to do it, and that's the day that I'll show up. Yes. So, I do want to point out a few things on the back page of the calendar. You'll see that there's a couple dates listed, and that's in case there are scheduling conflicts with the dates that are not in parentheses, the parentheses dates are there as a backup. So, you can, if you would like, when the time comes, adopt the calendar as is, holding all those dates, or pick one or the other and adopt it. That's up to you. Any questions about the calendar? Okay, so then I'm just briefly going to touch on the Q and Qs. When we went over them the last time that I met with you, it appeared that we did want to have the community have an opportunity to make any comments or respond to that. So, just wanted to remind you of that. They are not changed from when I first handed them out to you, but you do have that opportunity to edit them as you, as you see fit. Then we have the salary comparison that was ran. It takes a look at the districts in Oregon with a similar student population, averages that. It also, on the bottom half, looks at districts in your surrounding area, just to give you an idea. So, based on the average, we would then have a recommendation of what your starting would be and your maximum would be, and then any discussion that came from that.
It sounded like from our conversation via email that we were sort of expecting an updated one from last year soon. Is that probably still true?
And that's always a little bit of a mystery.
Okay.
It is in February each year, but we never know if it's first week, second week, third week, or last week of February. So, we're waiting for it any time. Now, it could be available by the time you have your meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll do our best to get all that to you as soon as we can. All right. Any questions about what I've sort of laid out or how the process will proceed?
So, if we're going to go over Q and Q at either the 18th or the 24th meeting, between now and then, we're going to get community input on the Q and Qs? Is that...
Well, we'd have the opportunity because it's been posted on Board Book.
It has, okay.
And people can weigh in. I don't think it's a formal...
It's not a formal...
Correct. The formal process was when I went out into the schools and met with folks and then had those community meetings as well.
Okay.
And the survey. Now, posting it so others can review, it gives them an opportunity to give any comment that they like during the public comment.
I think that's helpful for people to know that they...
Yeah.
Perfect.
So, just a note, I've spoken with Debbie about exchanging information that we need to get started. So, we'll put everything together we can, except for what you decide on either the 18th or the 24th, and we'll be ready to go the next day or the following day. So, whatever you choose.
Yeah, we'll do all the prep work we can.
And just to clarify, from my understanding, the intention is that we can have the dates presented in this manner and the parentheses dates can stay there as a backup?
Yeah.
Okay.
In case we don't...
So, we don't have to choose one or the other right now?
Correct.
We can say, this is it, but if these fall through, this is our rain check day?
Yes, that way you kind of held them in your own calendars, they're on this, that will be adopted by the board and published. So, if there is any conflicts that come up, we've kind of got that backup option.
There's one key date, and that's the date you decide to close applications. Other than that, you can have the parenthesis, as Sarah just said. You can do a lot of predicting and create windows of time, but we do need to pick a definite date for closing. That's the only one that's really certain.
And the date that we have on this is March 29th. That's the Sunday following spring break. We're very solid in that in terms of collecting those applications and getting that all in.
And is five-week standard?
I don't know that there's necessarily a super standard. Five weeks is certainly enough time.
It's enough.
Yes.
So, it sounds like what we're coalescing on here is we're going to have these basically all posted as draft. Well, you want the, you guys are looking for us to approve the calendar tonight, is that correct? Or on the 24th?
Hey, if you want to approve it tonight, that'd be great, but if you want to continue to look it over, we can do that either on the 18th or the 24th.
That's where I was headed. So, and then the qualities and qualifications are publicly available for everybody. We can send the feedback and the ideas in action on that, that other night, as well as the salary range conversation. Thank you.
Sure. So, if there are no other questions, I think the next course of action is you guys determine if you want to do the 18th or the 24th, and you let us know, and then we will be there and we'll get to work.
Okay. I will talk to you guys about availability off time, so you can try and figure that out.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Okay, so, where are we at? I've got 70 other items. Are there any other items? Okay, Administrator and Staff reports, starting out with Budget Goals.
So, we're going to talk a little bit about budget goals for the 2020-21 fiscal year. And I just want to start with just a little brief kind of description of what I mean by that. We're not going to get into numbers tonight. Really, just what we want to do is to do is just make sure that we sort of have the direction to start building the budget based upon the strategic plan that is already in place. When we work on the strategic plan, we do so and also talk about this notion of budgeting the plan. And that's where we are now, is at the beginning of that process, where we're actually start building our budget with the plan firmly in mind. And so, Steve's holding up here some excerpts from our strategic plan. So, we have our three, our three goals. Do you have those? Just remind us, our three strategic goals are, one, each student is on track to graduate every year; two, each student has the social and emotional learning skills to navigate the world; and number three, each school facility reflects the excellence of education in our district. And this year, we put into action a bunch of initiatives and work to implement those goals. And we have been reporting on that. I think we did a report here in November, and we'll be doing another one probably in April, showing our progress to date on all of that work and all of those objectives. So, with that in mind, and Steve's going to go into a little bit more here, but really what I wanted to do is to affirm that that is in fact what the board would like us to do, is to start budgeting the plan for next year.
And that's really the kickoff point, you know, for us, you know, we're just starting in earnest to, you know, start to put the budget together over the next two months and working with departments and schools to develop a proposed budget. And this really has to be the core, you know, that we have to keep in mind as we go through all the steps. So, we, it starts with you, you know, giving us that affirmation, so...
Guys, well, that'll be a kind of an overlay. I mean, we kind of have our current budget and the way things are going, but will we see kind of an overlay of where the Student Success Act funds kind of piece in there?
Yes, actually, we'll be dealing with that as a whole separate budget. That will not be within the general fund budget. It'll have its own special revenue fund, and all of those initiatives and all that work will be budgeted sort of independently from the overall general fund budget. Now, when it comes time to eventually approve the budget, when you do that in, or excuse me, to adopt the budget in June, you will be adopting all of it in its entirety, including Student Success Act, special education funding and expenditures and all the different federal programs. So, the whole, the whole thing, and you'll be authorizing those appropriations and expenditures for the upcoming year.
So, could it be that what we do on general fund is revised based on Student Success Act progress? Like, goal two is social and emotional health, right? And so, there's definitely buckets that could pay for that out of student success if it goes through the whole process, right?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So, the, you started to tiptoe up to the concept of supplanting. So, the Student Success Act has very specific objectives to reach very specific students and learners in a very specific way. And we'll get further into that in the coming months. In fact, we're going to send to you all a draft of some of the working documents that you're going to be hearing more about on February 24th, and you'll receive sort of a full presentation of our draft, our first draft of our Student Success Act plan, at which time we'll begin taking public comment. It'll come back in March. We're going to ask the board to approve that plan in March, and as we'll get it submitted at the end of March on time, because that is really the most important thing, is that it gets submitted. You don't get funded if you don't get submitted.
I think that's a really important point, though, that it really is separate and that the lawmakers and the public can weigh in on the new appropriations, has specific, what's the word, accountability in mind for that money and that it goes to those specific things and not supplants. So, I think...
It's a, yeah, very specific defined uses, which means that we'll be budgeting for it in Fund 200, special revenue funds, and we'll have it as its own separate fund. It won't roll in with some of those other grants. So, it's a, you know, a new program and it's a substantial amount of money. So, you know, we have Fund 200, I could, you know, call it 201, 202, whatever it is, it'll be its own separate appropriation and plan.
And separate from the strategic plan, really, because that's what's guiding our general fund expenditures.
And they are really complementary of one another. So, there are some definite through lines from the Student Success Act planning and plan that's being put together with our strategic plan. They really do work together. But really, what we are looking for tonight is, and I think I'm seeing, I'm seeing some head nods, that is to affirm really that we're going to start preparing the budget to stay the course with the work that we have begun this year, and assuming that will carry on into next year. Should there be a desire to change in the strategic plan, we'd want to look at that probably first thing in the fall. It's, I would, I would offer it's too late now if you want to change a goal in the strategic plan to change that right now, but if you want to look at any tweaks to the plan, we'll be bringing those forward in the fall.
And just to kind of finish up the budget topic, just to kind of reaffirm the timeline we have, our official Budget Committee meetings, which are on the calendar, the board and budget calendar, the first one is on Thursday, April 16th, and the second one is on May 7th. So, there's plenty of time after that to have additional meetings if we need to. But in the same token, we had talked about possibly having some more informal meetings or forums, like December, January. Obviously, there's, you know, some pretty big things going on with negotiations and some other things. So, we haven't had those discussions, but I think that we probably could do something like we did last year. We started it last year. We had, I think, broke three different meetings up where members of the Budget Committee, which includes you, of course, you know, we have to limit it to, you know, no more than whatever it was, five or more than three board members, or however you could come and ask questions. We could go over kind of the current state of affairs, and, I mean, it could also be open to the public as well, but I think that's a good way to have some informal discussions before the budget document is actually built, which of course is just a proposed document that could be changed. I know, Charles, we'd like to get together and plan on having those types of meetings again. So, so that's just kind of the plan, and we're just starting to get that work going, and just wanted to communicate that with you tonight. So, with regards to the actual current year budget and financial statement in your packet and onboard book, there's a four-page financial report through the month of January. The first page is the revenue summary for the general fund, and as we've been most of the year, we're right on target in all of our revenue source areas, local, state, and intermediate revenue sources. We're, you can see right where we were budgeting to be and where we're projected. The second page, we get into the expenditures, and this is where, between the report that you have in front of you right now to what it'll look like at the end of February, things will start to change. So, you can see that in the bottom right, well, if you look at the dials, which I know you like the dials there, you could see that our actual year-to-date expenditures are running over a percentage point below what's projected. And the projections are, you know, I'm fine-tuning that calibration every month. It's based on five years of history, which is good, but it also takes some review every month, and it's, once you get past December, it starts to come into clear focus. And so, these projections are pretty accurate. Now, the reason we're running below projection is because we were still in negotiations. We had budgeted the STEP plus 3% COLA, and of course, we didn't settle till the end of January. So, the entry into our accounting system and the retro pay for the agreement that was settled will happen on February 25th. So, when this, at the end of February, this will look, you know, quite a bit different. So, the way this projection tool has been running is that it, I mean, it knew that STEP was already granted, but that's the way the salaries were reflected, but the 3% had not been, there had been no action taken on that. So, so through January, we're five twelfths through the licensed salary season, because we have three in June. So, it kind of leaves those five months behind, but it still assumes we're going to do the 3% for the last seven months. So, so what it'll do is it'll actually catch up with that retro, and then we'll actually see this red bar start to exceed the purple bar, because we will go above projections because the settlement was higher than the... because the settlement was higher than we had forecasted. So, so just so you see, this, this will be a distinct change between January and February. I just want to make sure that everyone kind of understands how the, the graphs and the dials are working here. The other, the, if you flip to the third page, I think I put this in here before, but again, until we get partway through the year, it, it's not calibrated as well, but you'll see the, the general fund, fund balance report. And I think this is a really interesting page, because it, it shows the way that the cash flow works from month to month through the district. You can see that the red line or dotted line and, and markers there are from last year, and the blue line is this year. So you could see that we, you know, we, we tend to peak out in November and December. Well, that's when we're receiving about 85% of our property tax receipts for the year. So that's why that, that peaks out there. And then we start to come down the rest of the year and take the drop off in June, when, you know, we get our last state school fund payment in May, and we have three, three payrolls in June, June, July, and August, so the balance contract payroll, so that's where that drops off. So I think it's, it's very important to know, kind of, you know, what, again, this is pretty, pretty early, but if you look at the, at the far right in June there, you can see where we ended last year, which we, we've shown this number before, and it was in, in the audit report and such, but our ending fund balance was just under 4, 4.7 million dollars. Again, an, an early estimate, and this is again, without that, you know, settlement payroll in there for the additional amount, you know, it's, it's coming up with about 3.2 million right now. And again, that's, that's early. There's a lot of fiscal year yet to play out, and there's a lot of factors involved. But when you, when you take in the additional amount from the settlement for the license agreement, you know, we could be looking, in this situation, anywhere from a three to a 3.4 million dollar ending fund balance. But when you take that into account, it could be anywhere from, say, a 2.4 to maybe 2.7 ending fund balance, which would place down in that 5 or 6% range. So it's, 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 it's a pretty severe change, but we also have to keep in mind that this is the first year of the biennium, and so the state funds us this year on 49% of the $9 billion state school fund budget, and next year we'll get 51%, and that's a $1.6 million difference. So I guess if you were to split the difference and say if they did 50/50, we'd be, we'd begin an extra $800,000 in revenue this year. So, and that's the way they did it last biennium. So there is a little bit of timing difference involved, but I think the bottom line is, is that regardless of what the settlement was, even if it had been what we budgeted, we had been talking the last year or two that we had peaked out last biennium on our ending fund balance, and that was going to start to be used, which it did in the 1719 biennium. When we started the 1719 biennium, we started at 5.2, or under five, just under 5.2 million dollars, and we ended this last biennium at the 4.7. So 1718, 1819. So that, that bore out like we said. But this is going to, again, partly because we're only getting 49% in the first year, is going to take a bigger drop this year, but overall, will take a bigger drop if we don't change some course with expenses in this biennium, even with the additional revenue next year. So we do have to be prepared, you know, to reduce some expenses to make sure that current resources and current expenditures come into alignment. And again, it's, it's really early, but my, my rough estimate is, is right now is in the 2.5 to 3.5% of expenses, which could range anywhere from $900,000 to $1.5 million. And again, I'll be updating that every month. The further we go along, the more we know. And so, I will say, there is a piece of good news that came out right, I think it was beginning of last week or the end of the week before. At the last PERS board meeting, it was stated that the, the advisory rates that they're looking at for 2021, 2023, and these are not official rates, PERS will not adopt the new rates for the next biennium until September, but it appears, as of right now, because of good investment years in 2018 and 2019, coupled with Senate Bill 1049, that PERS rates right now are not projected to go up, even maybe go down one percentage point of payroll. You may recall that this biennium for this year and next year, PERS went at four percentage points of payroll. So that is not something that I expected to hear. I expected to hear it, that it would go up, you know, at least a couple percentage points again come 21, 23. So that's something in kind of the midterm that could help us, even though they still expect, I think, potentially, you know, for those rates to go up in '23, '25, '25, '27. So that was some, some welcome news. So there's just a lot of things to balance and...
That's welcome news.
The state's, state school fund grant, any surprises there? This one says, as of 1/31/2020.
Oh, yes. So I did include a separate link, because just, I didn't know they were putting one out, but we hadn't received one since the summer. But no, they just put out a new, ODE put out a new state school fund grant estimate for, for 1920. Ours went up a little bit from, from, from June, but it's actually about what I expected it to be when we budgeted. So, no, I mean, it's pretty much what we're expecting. It's just our local revenues. I was able to, in December, we submit updated local revenue projections, and, and then also our projections for local revenue and enrollment for next year, because they have to put out their first estimate for the next year, in this case for 2021, by March 1st. So we'll, we'll see that also by, by the time we, we were at our March board meeting, we'll know what that estimate is, so.
And for anybody who's new to the, the school budgeting cycle in Oregon, understand that we will get updates to the state's school funding formula for, for the 1920 school year, all the way through May of 2021. More of these to come.
I just want to say thank you for focusing on the strategic plan and the budgeting process. Every year, we get stronger with that, and I think the more we do it, the more we'll see opportunities. So thanks again for working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have board reports. Anybody would like to share anything?
Last week, I went to the Long Range Facilities Committee meeting, and that was my three presentations, one by, I believe, I guess it's off the top of my head, Tom Newton, Melissa Briggs, Cyber Briggs, and Eliza Tora. And they all did fantastic jobs explaining three different specific details for that. And there was 20-plus people who attended, and that was really encouraging to see. There was a lot of good information shared, and I believe we also had three goals that were placed on the board as well that were...
Guiding principles.
Guiding principles. Thank you.
From which to work for the next couple of months.
Absolutely. So altogether, it was fantastic, and there was really good energy in the air, and this group is just fantastic. They got good energy, they got a great focus, so we'll see some fantastic things from them.
I'll share briefly last week, I got to attend the Battle of the Books training session at the high school with the kids again. And, you know, it's a lot of fun to watch the kids, but I really want to say thank you to all the staff, administrators, teachers, assistants, whoever, everybody. There were a lot of people there helping to make this thing happen. And, you know, it was really, really fun, and I appreciate everybody's time on this.
Now that Paul, or your knee is maybe doing a little bit better, and we can schedule some school visits. Back to that, weather's getting nice and get out there and see some schools.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Next up, SFBA.
Hi. Well, there's, there's been a lot going on tonight, so we want to keep our message short. So first of all, thank you guys so much for your ratification vote last week. That was really exciting for our members to finally have our contract negotiated and ratified officially by the board. We sent out a ratification survey to our membership at the end of last week, and over the course of a couple of days, acquired enough of a majority vote that we also ratified our contract. So it is officially done. So, obviously, that was a huge endeavor for all of us, and we are very much looking forward to moving on from that aspect of, of our business together. And in that, in that vein, we just want to talk a little bit about kind of where we feel like we are right now, SFBA leadership perspective. So our teachers are happy with their new contract, and we are very hopeful that the language changes will be effective in keeping the events of the past from occurring again. We're appreciative of the changes in practice and contract language that we've advocated for, for the past nine months, being ratified by this board, as well as our members. We want to have closure, and we want to move forward, but we do admit that it is a difficult process. We're all human, and we're working for humans, and achieving success in this process is going to be a very nuanced endeavor, and we expect there to be some messiness as we figure out how to move forward. So I just want to reiterate that we really are appreciative for the efforts that have been made in, in trying to, to come to agreements with the teachers and listening to our voices. We have felt that, but we also recognize that it's, just because the contract is done doesn't mean that it's just, everything's peachy keen again. And so we are going to work hard in our leadership team to try to keep perspective and also work on that communication. So, yeah. Any, any questions for us or anything?
No, I do, I appreciate the perspective. I think it's great. I think, you know, having a culture of tolerance and forgiveness all around, right? Everybody's susceptible to failing there, certainly myself included, so I think it's a great perspective.
Yeah, and I think no matter what happens, I mean, that, it's that intent that we're moving forward, and we're moving forward together. And even if there's messy steps along the way, that is our big purpose and our big intent.
Thank you for coming.
Next up, we have our second public comment, which is limited to discussion and action. There were plenty of them, so there's... A new topic. Owen Von Fleu again. The complainants are going to be disappointed tonight, not disappointed in the board's decision so much in not censuring Director Nealon, but in Director Nealon's response to the complaint. Throughout, she has been dismissive, defiant, indignant, and angry. She has refuted and challenged the allegations in every way she could think. She claimed free speech rights under the Constitution. She hired lawyers. She threatened others. She blamed the complainants. She blamed the district for her ignorance, her own ignorance of the policies, and finally blamed the policies themselves. This response does not foster trust, doesn't heal relationships, quite the opposite, and that is disappointing.
My name's Christine Gunther.
And I'm Tiffany Schmidt.
And I'm Sheila Nielsen.
As teachers...
Megan, are you speaking to this group?
Yes.
Is there anything?
Yep. As teachers in the Silver Falls School District, with more than 48 years combined, we love this school district and have chosen it above any other. A number of people have expressed the desire to move forward. At this time, we ask this philosophy be extended to the district's administration as well. We do not consider our work environments to be hostile, and we appreciate our administration. As a district, we have celebrated our teachers and our classifieds. It's time to recognize the admin and the difference that they have made. Often, our admin takes the front without being allowed to, being allowed to defend themselves. The last six months have been a learning experience for you as a board. Please grant each district administrator, both in our schools and the district office, the same respect. Thank you.
I'm not quite as elegant as Owen, but I had a few things to add to that. It was referred to that earlier this evening about the censure with Todd White. I want to point out that Todd was, was censured a few years ago due to activities that he was responsible for, for violating board policy. Shelley was directly involved in that decision to come forward with a complaint, which, which ended up in investigation and ultimately a censure action. Todd was fairly gracious at the time in accepting the censure and agreed with the findings of the investigation. There is a significant difference between the actions that have recently been brought to light and the actions that Todd was involved with. The actions by Todd were very visible, not hidden, and involved very narrow policy violations. Issues that were, that are part of the current complaint involving Shelley involve a pattern of activity that broke board policies that were pervasive and secretive. The activities in question continued even after issues had been partially exposed and specific board training was completed in response to these, these concerns. It's very important the board take action, recognize the issues, and distance itself from this, this disgraceful behavior. Also want to point out, there's some discussion earlier this evening about training. The training involving, that, that happens in the August work session typically involves ethics, law, and policy, and these, these type of things are always, always covered every year. So it should be no secret. Thank you.
Probably what I'm going to say and who it's towards is fairly self-explanatory, but I like to say, by saying that you are an elected official. You are looked to to set an example of behavior. You set it for your fellow board members, community members who elect you, and the schoolchildren that you represent. I just read a letter from a lawyer to the district. Now, the last paragraph, he asked the board and the complainants that they apologize to you, but not once have you apologized for your actions. Not once have you admitted any sort of wrongdoing. I've listened to you in multiple board meetings and multiple work sessions, placed blame on others and past board members, but not once have you owned your actions. The other members named in the complaint have admitted fault and apologized, and we trust them in their responses. Yet you refuse to apologize. Just a few minutes ago, you asked us to move forward, but I ask you, how can we move forward as a school district and as a community member, as a community, when all of our trust in you is lost? Thank you.
So I'm going to tell a story. Many years ago, when I didn't have any gray hair or wrinkles, I backpacked in Europe with my cousin Laura Hofer and my best friend Stacy Lovejoy. And one of my favorite memories was going to the little town of Rio Maggiore in Italy. And there, we went to Mama Rosa's youth hostel, and there was a long table, probably as long as the, where you're sitting, and people from all over the world were sitting there. And we all chipped in at that time in 1990, two American dollars, and we made spaghetti dinner. And, ah, he's speaking in public. At that table, there were people from all over the world, like I was saying. And one minute, all the women were arguing against all the men about what women argue with men about. The next minute, the Americans were arguing against the Europeans. Then the Europeans, Americans were arguing against the people from South Africa, and the lines changed quickly. After dinner, we agreed to go get gelato, and we were sitting on the beach, and someone said, wouldn't it be nice if this is the way the world acted, was really like, that we could disagree, but sit down, plan a hike for the next day, and have gelato? we could disagree, but sit down, plan a hike for the next day, and have gelato. I respect everyone in this room. We disagree about things, especially since I'm a duck and most of you are beavers, but I think we can all agree that it's pretty cool that we have both the Ducks and the Beavers Women's Team in the top 25 of women's basketball. We can agree that there's both great colleges. We can agree that we have great kids. And when we listen to Owen, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Evelyn, talk tonight, I think when you listen to what they had to say tonight, that's a reflection of who our community is. Our community is a reflection of great parents, and in this room, there are great parents. There are great community members, and they're great people. And we're going to disagree, but we're also going to agree. We have a choice tonight, and it's really disappointing for me because I work at a college, and my job, our college's job, is to train young people to have jobs that aren't even going, we don't even know what those jobs are going to be 10 years from now. Just think about all of us in this room. We never knew when we went to college that when we took our typewriters that weighed more than, you know, our kids' backpacks, that they'd be walking in the door with little tiny, you know, iPads. We never knew that. One thing that every company is looking for that I've talked to, they want it so that Lori and I, Irv, Tom, and Wally, we all have to sit down at the table, put our differences aside, and solve problems. So I'm asking you, sorry now, we have a messy kitchen. It's like we had a big Thanksgiving dinner, and we have a really messy kitchen, and we're arguing who's going to clean the kitchen. I'm asking you to put your differences aside for these kids, because we all love these kids. And these kids are our future, and these are the kids that are going to be taking care of the problems that we don't even know about. So it disappoints me, and I'm guilty too, and I'll say my forgiveness, asking for forgiveness because I'm not perfect, but it disappoints me when we laugh at Shelley. It disappoints me when we're not respectful to one another. So we have a choice tonight. You can keep fighting about this stuff. You can keep bickering over things. Look at DC. We're just a microcosm of what's happening in DC. Thank you for your time.
Edward Clements, I signed in the back. I echo what I believe the couple speakers ago, Mrs. Schecker said, and I'll preface it by, well, I guess I'll just, I'll mention that I've been to several of the meetings. I was at the meeting when the complaint was first presented back in the auditorium. I was at one of the work session meetings where you all discussed it, and then I missed the next work session meeting. I was at the last one a couple, last week, and then I'm here tonight. I was struck immediately at that first work session by the demeanor of Mrs. Traeger and Mr. Edmonds. They were very contrite, concerned that if they'd had broken a policy, that they wanted to remedy that, to take responsibility and to move on for the better of our district. I was quite surprised because I've had interaction with Mrs. Nealon. Our kids' cars were both egged, you may remember, during the summer, and massive damage was done to their cars. And we spoke and had this really delightful conversation about how do we let these kids learn a lesson without ruining their lives? You know, we wanted to all handle it in a fair-minded way. So I was shocked, honestly, with their response and disappointed, and I thought, well, maybe that was just a flare-up in that moment. But as Mrs. Schecker mentioned a minute ago, it's been a consistent pattern, blaming, threatening, you know, letters from the attorney, I'm going to bring my legal counsel. And I think had I seen, like, I'm disappointed as one of the 112 complainants at the response because I think if had I seen, you know, humble heart about this and, gosh, you know, what I saw from the other two members, and I understand Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Alenek were, but those were sort of moved aside because they weren't seated. I get that. The other two that were seated, you know, I very much wanted to take remedy for the situation and, you know, apologize and even censure themselves. I'm utterly, I guess I'm blown away by the response, disappointed, and I agree with Mrs. Schecker. It's hard to move forward, and for people, me being one of the 112, my wife and I being one of the 112 complainants, to say, you know, it's just okay. I mean, we're going to fight and, you know, get angry, and, you know, she's going to get angry and just keep denying it. It's a little hard to move forward. I think if there was a simple statement of acknowledgement and, you know, regret and apology, that would go a long way for me. Thank you so much.
I do appreciate, and I want to comment, that the board's ability to disagree over huge topics and to come to agreement tonight really does go a long way and speak well for how you do get along. I absolutely disagree with a couple of the previous comments, and I, like, Mr. Clements, I don't remember the exact date, but at least two board meetings ago, I sat there and I heard and watched Ms. Nealon read a two-minute statement during which she covered many bases, including she was sorry it happened, she was going to try to never do it again, she apologized for her actions. I did see it. Lastly, Irv, I don't think all of you have to get together and write every single policy all over. You, I know, have only two hours per week that you don't work, but if you guys, if the seven, if the seven of you divide up the work and you're joined by two more, and Ms. Freely, the attorney, oversees the changing of the policy, you could each work on separate components, get together, decide if that's the right way to go, and then put it together. You don't have to be there for every meeting. Thank you.
I have four kids in the district in four different schools. My wife teaches kindergarten, and Mark Twain. We can spend hours, months, and days, weeks, years talking about the past year. I just wanted to say I also agree with the time is now to move forward on the permanent super search. We need to start working on how the district is going to handle growth, our aging buildings, and we have had discussions that have stalled on changing Mark Twain, Robert Frost to K5 to alleviate space due to the transition from permanent or to permanent leadership. We're currently treading water, and it's not fair to our students to not move forward. We also have been serving on, I have also been serving on the long-term facility committee. And like Irv, I have a lot of time in my pickup to think and have conversations with myself. Issues about our buildings, facilities need to, have been going on for years and years, and I have struggled with the decision to spend my time on this issue because I feel several issues need to be tackled, and the main one would be in the middle school, personally for me. Realistically, my kindergartner kid will likely never even see it if it was to start right now, if it was to open. And I have thought long and hard of if I should even stay involved, but I think long and I come to the conclusion, and I watch my kid and drop my kid off at the high school now, and I coach him on those baseball fields, and I've been in the gyms, in the football fields, that if somebody hadn't done it when I was in high school, it wouldn't be here for my kids. And so that's why I'm going to stick with it. I want to see it go through, and I really hope that we can get somebody hired that we can keep these things going down the road and not going back. Waiting another two years is just going to prolong it even more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me wrap this up. So, you know, one thing that was brought up a few comments ago, but it reminded me of something that I'd meant to say previously, so I'm going to take that. I'm going to do it now briefly. Supporting our amazing teachers in this district, I don't think is mutually exclusive with supporting our amazing administrators. We really do have a broadly amazing team, and I don't think we have to constantly view it in terms of sort of sides and scorecards and things like that. So I think the more we're able to talk openly and the more that we're able to recognize each other's strengths and weaknesses and encourage one another to do better, all the better. I'm a firm believer in accountability, as was shown tonight probably by my thoughts and statements, but having said that, I'm also a believer in forgiveness and moving on. So just felt like I needed to say that. Now I got to find my agenda. Okay, we are to action items. A, 12A, the complaint response, which during discussion previously, I believe we had more or less landed on the idea that we were going to modify the draft, which was not a resolution censuring Director Nealon, a resolution for a response, how about this, a response to complaint filed, and I do not remember the date. Thank you. November 5th, 2019. And then, I think, on the 5th, whereas, we were going to consider, at least I was considering whether we wanted to just basically say that the findings and conclusions found, quote or colon, you know, 1 through 4, right? So it was just going to strike specifically any language about Shelley. This is not a resolution censuring Shelley. This is a resolution responding to the complaint filed. I think we leave in the file, the policy violation, then they're essentially accurate and now therefore be resolved that the Silver Falls School Board has a remedy intended to resolve the complaint submitted on the 25th, others the 18th. Hereby commits to schedule targeted training regarding the findings to be completed by August 31st. Is that summarizing what-
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would like to put something in there that we acknowledge the complaint. I think that we, what, you know, from that, we hear the public, we acknowledge that, but because of what we're voting on, I think there needs to be something in there that, I don't know.
So I think it sort of is, but do you have your draft?
Yeah, but I like to listen to you.
Do you want to read it?
Yeah.
So whereas, I'll read the first five whereas clause. Whereas the Silver Falls School Board is responsible for the governance of schools in the district, and whereas we have established policies which govern the conduct of its directors when communicating with the public, whereas the Silver Falls School Board has investigated a complaint sent by 111 community members of the Silver Falls School District into violations of these policies, of these policies, whereas the Silver Falls School Board acts as a fact-finding body when issues involve board policies and their fair implementation, whereas the Board of Directors through its legal counsel as provided in the February 3rd, 2020 findings and conclusions report, found, lists violations, now therefore be resolved. Very good. Good?
So do we need to just say violations of, just from-
Probably from a grant standpoint. Let's see, violations, where are you at?
Well, all of them, they start with violation.
Violated policy.
So violation of-
Violations of policy. I am fine with that. Everybody see that differently? No?
You've been accused of not apologizing. Could you put that in the resolution?
Are there any other things we need to consider? Down the line. Okay. I have a modified draft. If somebody wants, I will entertain a motion for-
Just read the resolved little piece one more time, the targeted.
Okay. Hereby commits to schedule targeted trainings regarding the findings, and we could fill in the details, but the findings of, yeah, the findings above, I don't know what that, the findings above, to be completed by August 31st, 2020.
I'd like a motion to adopt our resolution. Read it again. A resolution.
It's called a response to the complaint.
Yes, a resolution, a response to the complaint filed November 25th, 2019.
Any additional discussion? I know there's been a lot of public comment, we've had a lot of internal discussion amongst ourselves. Any additional discussion before receiving the-
Yeah. Go ahead, Jim.
I just want to say one thing. When I'm in my car, I listen to a lot of history podcasts. And one that I listened to the other day was the history of Brexit. And one of the things that really struck me that the historian said was that you cannot, all, everything that's happening in the now is affected by history, and sometimes we have to acknowledge that things have happened in the past. And we talk about moving forward, and I think that moving forward is an awesome way to go. I don't want to dredge up the past, but just that wisdom that remembering things that happened in the past and acknowledging them, I think is smart so that you can move forward. That things don't really move forward if you just cut them off and don't pay attention to them. So anyway, I just think like an appropriate thing to say.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going, I was hoping for a stronger response, so I'll be voting no on it, but I want to, I want to reverse Lori's comments. Lori, you did a great job of speaking for that, for the passion and on behalf of, I mean, it was perfect. But my, my reasons for voting no and the reasons for wanting a stronger response is that be careful because it's the passions that will get you, that will get the district in trouble. That's, you know, and finding the proper outlet for it, you know? And I would say, you know, next time you got those passions, call the superintendent. You know, that's anybody. It's just, is, you know, anybody, actually. And, and as, it's interesting because when I was first on the board, I was at odds with the superintendent over a few things, and it was hard. It was really hard. And I remember at some, you know, I started going in the office, stating my case, having it out, but I learned, it took about three years for me to get it and how to kind of, how to, how to make it work. So anyway, I, you did a great job. I heard you. I agree with you, but I, I'm just for a stronger response. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you got it. And Shelley, I mean, that was to, she did a great job, both of you. So anyway.
And even though I'm not voting with you, I really appreciate your point of view, and I think there's a lot of wisdom in it, and hopefully advice is taken, even though the vote goes the same.
Yeah, don't worry, I'm not going to raise a stake in my head. Yes, no.
I just have one thing to say. I feel that I could apologize over and over and over again, but those are words and actions speak louder than words, like I mentioned on December 30th of 2019. So my actions moving forward are going to be very different from what you've seen in the past, and that's what counts because we demonstrate to our children and our students in this district that you can say you're sorry, I'm sorry, and they do it again, potentially. Actions speak louder than words. So I'm holding myself accountable to my actions moving forward, to this body and to the public. And you can hold me accountable to my actions, and you can, we can also praise each other for the actions that people are taking in this district to make change in a proactive way, because I think we're ready to move forward. And I want to thank my board members, my colleagues, for giving me that opportunity to show you the actions I'm going to present to you from here on out.
I'll just mention, you know, I think I, I planned to vote for this response in favor of it. I, I also think I can say that knowing that I was probably an advocate or still remain an advocate for maybe a stronger worded statement than that as well.